They spell that out.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Darcy, whenever you're ready, call please.
Moore?
There was more? Yeah.
Mar? Moody? Instrom? Inga Hart?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item three is a pledge. Everybody that's able to stand, please stand.
Insight pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item four then, perfection and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to show? All right, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no, carry. Item five is, uh, public comment time, everybody?
What?
What? Are you sure?
I'm on my patient food house week, so.
Okay, all right, all right. I think, uh, Devora, you have a comment, but please pull that in closer.
Thank you. Often insightful, meaningful, and positive dialogue with Pastor Noah, I wanted to say following publicly. As a Jewish postful city councilwoman, I was very deeply disturbed to learn about the recent trespass of one of the local churches here in town. I want to make it absolutely clear that such actions are reprehensible and have no place in our community. On my own behalf only and guided by the values of my faith, I condemn the senseless act and the harm and damage it caused. In Judaism, we teach respect and dignity for all religions and places of worship, including those outside the boundaries of our faith. The disgraceful actions of those involved do not at all represent the teachings of our faith or the values of our community. While I understand that the offense was committed by a member or members of the Jewish community, I obviously cannot justify, apologize, or speak for the entire community as I am not the spokesman for the Jewish community. However, I hope sincerely that we can all remain steadfast together in promoting understanding, respect, and growth side by side. As one of your council members, I remain committed and will continue to work towards fostering the culture of mutual respect and acceptance in our hometown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devora. Okay. Thanks, Devora, that was nice comments. Uh, okay, we'll go on to item six then, and that's engineering bids, and that's for the Ziegler project, and that's has to do with the water and the sewer that the city will provide for that project, so.
All right, so you had two, uh, proposals, um, Schneider and Associates, which you had looked at previous, and then we did go out to Erdman Engineering and get a price from them, and it's kind of confusing to try and compare these. But I would have to say with Lindsay's, starting with Erdman, um, he is estimating their fees for part one of $2,200 and part two, which includes surveying anywhere from $5,200 to $6,200. So, and if you compare that to, um, Schneider, there's, um, let's see here, the preliminary lump sum of $5,000. And I don't believe that includes surveying. I think in their next design phase is the survey.
Yes, you are, yes, yes.
What?
The design phase even included in Erdman?
It is in that, so he wants $2,200 just to talk about the routes, right? Do that study. Then he wants $5,200 to $6,200 for survey work.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
That's Lindsay?
That's Lindsay. Okay, and then, um, Schneider, a lump sum, which would include the surveying, would be $30,000. If you look at Lindsay's email, which I went back to him again to try and figure out how that would compare, he's saying, estimated $200 to $250,000 project is what we're looking at, so he's saying their range would be $20,000 to $25,000.
It's also hard to compare those two because Schneider has it as a standard fee schedule.
Yep. And then, um, for Schneider's bidding services, they want an hourly rate not to exceed $3,500. And then, construction from Lindsay is to be determined. A lot of that depends on, it's a percentage on what the bidding project comes in at, so that's why it's hard to determine those amounts.
Even just going about the first two phases.
Mm-hmm. So if you're looking at it by the first phase, you'd probably say Schneider is the lower proposal.
But Schneider did, or does that include surveying?
Uh, their lump sum, in the original lump sum is not surveying, in the second part of their proposal for the $30,000, that includes the survey in that.
Do we have a relationship with either one of these?
Uh, we use Erdman, they're kind of considered our city engineer.
Because it seems like they're familiar with Chris and that.
Yeah, they meet with, they've met with him and went over. We originally had three different routes that we were looking at, and I think we narrowed it down to two after that meeting. We've never worked with Schneider. I think that's, we went to them because that's who Ziegler has hired. So we thought that maybe that would be a cost savings to use their engineer, being they're already involved in the project. Another thing about Erdman is, we know that they would be looking out for the city's best interest, so.
You just said before that part one would make sense to go with Schneider, but did you mean Lindsay?
Well, okay, so.
Twenty-two hundred and five thousand.
Right, but that didn't, right, Lindsay would be the cheaper one, for the baseline.
I think if you, even if you boil it all down, and they both came in almost the same money, and then it might be that way, you know, because there's so many things that aren't, Lindsay really hasn't spelled out, but I think Darcy's, I think said it right. Uh, Lindsay has worked with, uh, since I've been here, you know, we've done projects, and we, and Lindsay, I think, has done a great job, you know, for the city, and he's worked beyond, way before that, you know? And I, I think if you take a look at guy that, look at a guy that works with our city employees, you know, they, they work very closely together, and then, and Snyder may be the same, but, but it's like, uh, I think that, in my way of thinking anyway, that Lindsay Erdman would, uh, would do a better, or uh, look out for the city more.
I think that there'd be, since there's a relationship there.
Yes, yes.
Wouldn't Snyder's not probably good too, but.
Wouldn't Lindsay have more background and knowledge of what's already been done underground? Have a lot more historic paperwork, she wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel looking for it?
Right, yes.
So, did Ziegler's hire Snyder's to do all their stuff out there?
Just their utility work. They have multiple engineers, there's mechanical, there's, you know, the design, there's.
Can we revisit it after part one, not before part two?
Well, I think if once Lindsay's already in the project, he's in the project, we wouldn't, I don't think you'd want to try and bring another engineer in yet.
Cause he just says that, um, he said he could give, back after part one, he would give, oh, back in the second paragraph, back preliminary part two, he says we could confirm the first choice and then can do a preliminary cost estimate.
And we would want that from him regardless, yeah.
And Lindsay lives, is in Decora, right?
Yes.
These other guys got to come from where?
Cedar Rapids is their office.
You're saying as the project goes on, and you run into Schnags, you gotta have somebody available and accessible. And maybe, maybe not, maybe it's all easy schmeezy, usually never. Lindsay's close by, reachable. He also has more to lose if he, you know, as far as feeling like, if he feels, if we feel he gouges us here, he risks future relationships with the city. Snyder, you know, they're a must for Adam.
Pretty big deal.
They could, they might send us a big surprise bill at the end and say, there you go.
Cause that could happen, yeah, yeah.
So I have a favor to Erdman.
But you said they've narrowed the routes down?
Down to two we're looking at.
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, so we need to, um, make a decision on who, uh, who.
We accept engineering bids for, is it phase one and phase two, but not phase three yet, right?
We wouldn't be there yet.
Who pays one and space two, what, I move that we accept Erdman Engineering's proposal.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second? Devora, all right. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those who say no, okay, thank you. Go on to item seven, then, ordinance number 697-24, and ordinance relating to, uh, water rates, 2%.
This was your direction from your last council meeting?
Yes, you bet, so this is what, uh, was decided. We just have to approve the ordinance.
We knew this was coming for a long time, didn't we?
Yeah.
I move that we approve ordinance 697-24 relating to water rates.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Larry, all right, Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inga Hart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, uh, readings two and three, if you want to wave them, or?
I move we wave two and three reading.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inga Hart?
Yes.
All right, there we go.
There's no comments on one?
Nope.
So number three on the back page, that's for the garden people, right? Or not? About having a meter, an extra meter?
People can get an extra meter from us, we're broad and gardens out.
Just going back to that, what is the average size?
Five eights.
For a regular household?
Okay, any more? Okay, let's go on to item eight then, ordinance number 698-24, and ordinance amended chapter 41, Public Health and Safety of the City Code of Ordinances. This is Matt, is that right, buddy? Here, here.
Oh, we're talking about the other thing, okay, yeah. Okay, um.
Just want to explain what it is.
So, uh, earlier this, last month, there was a incident with a, dealing with a, uh, was it airsoft, it's airsoft gun with, uh, um, juveniles in possession of them. And there was a, we went off a different ordinance stuff of, uh, Iowa City had one, I believe it was, that included, it's pretty much the same, identical to what we had, but what we have already, they just included, uh, um, like, a minor under age eighteen, should be, the city let us go on with the carrying now, little pellet gun, air rifle, BB gun, um, airsoft, or another airsoft, but, um, whatever they call it, little disc things or whatever. They're not, not really the nerve, this, uh, they hurt me.
They shoot so, no?
No, they could. It's considered a, like a, uh, like a pellet air rifle, but they are, they look identical to like.
Not a paintball gun.
Not a paintball, no, they look identical to like a, uh, like a real firearm and everything, so basically, we just wanted to add on that to our section we have, existing one.
Right now, adults in section one purpose, that includes, that also adults, at the very top, nothing, it's prohibited.
Under eighteen is what we're looking at.
That's what we're changing?
Yeah.
So section one purposes would have changed to saying only under eighteen? So, how do you start up when an adult is carrying a BB or whatever? How, how does that help? When you see them carrying that, you still control if it's legal or not?
Well, then you get into the overcarry, and you can't say nothing about that.
Right.
They have their rate to carry. So, let's say if you're twenty-one, they get to carry while you can't force them not to have it. They just have the right to, yeah. This is for eighteen and under.
And then, so it says, some, it says dwelling, but does that include the yard, the garden, or just inside your house?
As long as they're on, like, they're
Your property.
Their property, yeah.
So like in your fence, it's okay?
Right. What we were having, what we were having issues with is, there was an individual going around shooting at windows on people's.
Vandalism, it's a pretty different thing, yeah. But if they're in their dwelling, shooting at windows, how does that stop them?
Well, these were, they were in a vehicle, shooting out other people's vehicle windows, and and I think they got a couple businesses too, yeah. He was, it was a juvenile, so.
So if they're under eighteen and they're in their own property, and go dwelling, then it's okay?
Right, right, as soon as they go, yeah.
Looking under eighteen in their own property, allowed to shoot out windows at neighbor?
No.
What about, uh, did that others type of gun, is that, I didn't see that listed here, what do you call? Did you find that?
Oh, they got, it's, um.
It says any other instrument.
Any other instrument, okay, yeah.
It says in their own dwelling, dwelling community of their own. Not necessarily in their yard.
It's considered.
That's not a loss. We're in a target range designed for the purpose, I guess, if that's.
Which we don't have, but.
That kind of covers that, I guess.
To me, a dwelling, dwelling is their house and the property. I did, like, I don't have it with me, but I'd like to see the state code for a dwelling for what, or, like, the B and R would be house and home buildings, that's considered dwelling. Property.
So adults are allowed to carry realistic looking air rifles, et cetera.
Eighteen and over for that?
Was that?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Eighteen and over.
No, it's for open carries, twenty-one.
So what do you do from the eighteen to twenty-one year olds?
Well, let's see, handguns are, see, uh, this works, it's it's twenty-one for open carry.
Okay, what about, if you don't have a concealed law anymore, so. So there's, there's gotta be something to have that caveat of eighteen to twenty-one, though.
And they can have the BBs or the air rifles or whatever they want?
See, like, the air rifle, BBs, you don't have to be twenty-one.
As I'm saying, that would cover the other, the two years.
But they're like the rifle and handgun, oh, like, shooting projectile, the handgun and rifle, rifle, is twenty-one. Eighteen is where you can carry the air rifle, cause you don't have to be twenty-one to purchase an air rifle. Or a BB gun, you'd be eighteen. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, the mechanism itself is the difference.
Yep. Cause what we, all we did was, we just put that, was it just this first paragraph then, wasn't it? I took it off, um, wanted to get a copy of, just added.
What does it give you the authority to do then with it?
Um, I think, where we.
It's an ordinance.
We were switching that to on the fine, I think, is what we talked to Dan about. We were gonna, I talked to Dan about, um, having that fine at, he suggested two or two fifty for the fine. On the, on the ordinance, ordinance that we just passed, um, a couple months ago. But he said get this taken care of first, then.
Well, then we'll go after fine.
Do you remember where you went over the ordinance to what we charge for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once you pass this, then you'll see that next meeting to change how much.
Yep.
And then is there reoccurring?
It goes.
You catch them often?
Yeah, it goes in, like, I think if the second, second fence would be five hundred, maybe? If we'd say if you went two fifty.
Keep doubling?
Yeah, keep doubling up, like the other ones.
So are the parents responsible for this fine?
Well, juveniles, of course, would be, they'd be fine, but also it can be referred to juvenile courts too, so.
Then how does somebody under eighteen have a, an air rifle, if it's not even legal for them to buy it under eighteen?
I don't, I don't know how we get them.
I mean, so then we can add that to the fines.
Either, either the parents or they find somebody that is eighteen that buys it for them, so.
If you want it bad enough, you can find a way.
Right.
It's only words, but you know, you sure, as a stupid kid, you show that to the wrong person, and the wrong person will show you the right, or the, the real thing.
That's what I mean, I got two of them in my office right now that look identical.
Really? And aren't the, the toys, even the, uh, eighteen year old purchases, aren't they supposed to have, still have the safety end on it?
Yeah, they pop them off.
Or paint them.
And then now, they can convert those over to a real one. The ones that I have in the office, we can convert it over, if you're smart enough, they can get it done.
What you in your offices, like, air rifles or?
Yeah, it's.
I think you can convert to a real, like a, one new caliber or something?
Yeah, we can.
And the orange tip to take off with it, yeah.
You can bat it with that.
Yep, sometimes you can, 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 yeah.
All right, so there we got it.
You have motion to pass that?
Yes, yes.
So move, move that we pass ordinance number 698-24.
All right, is there a second? Larry? Whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inga Hart?
Yes.
All right.
We're going the other way around on the votes?
It's for a change.
We always have.
Since the new year, since the new year, we did that.
It used to start from here, but notice that there's the E's and the N's.
Give you a chance to size up the situation.
Oh, yeah, so, wave the second and third, is there a?
Wave the second and third reading.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Inga Hart?
Yes.
All right, item nine, and is review director of community development, independent contract, um, Darcy, I guess, you've got this thing by the horns for a while.
So, um, the mayor and I both looked at this contract, and there's some comments, uh, that the city attorney, uh, sent back to me. And so, I thought I could answer them, but then we both thought maybe the council should answer them, since it's your contract, so. We can start on just maybe going over those comments, if you've read the contract. So, under the engaged services on page two is your first comment. So the comment is, is this pursuant to an agreement between the city and the chamber, or is this a collaborative relationship? I guess my comment back would be, it would be a collaborative relationship, would you agree?
Yeah, I saw that comment in the job description, it says right there, we'll collaborate.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, then the next comment is, this should be a regular function and should require additional progress, updates, measurable goals. I guess my thought would be, that would be in the what your, is required of them, so they would be giving you reports, you would be looking at progress.
Job description itself, right?
So what are we changing on that here too?
Um, I think our comment back is that.
We want to see regular progress.
Right.
Yeah.
But quarterly progress reports, that's what our whole team came up with as well, before the first one came out.
I think maybe what she's saying is that you would give, um, you would give them goals to, you know, updates and goals you would want to see from that that position.
I think, I think it's a good idea to put some definition of a timeline, whether it's monthly or quarterly, or.
Okay.
Otherwise, what's regular to one person?
Right, right, right. So do you want quarterly reports, is that sufficient?
I think in the beginning, we might want something more. Unless they don't have enough time to really do anything, a report in the first quarter, you know? Maybe quarterly to start with.
Okay, all right, so.
Well, I, I would think this person would probably be to every council meeting.
I agree. Do you have a person for this?
Make, make reports, um, no less than quarterly.
Okay.
To say if there's more
Okay.
Maybe we can say make reports to the city council no less than, or no less often than quarterly. Like, add a minimum. Yeah, cause if something comes up, then she should come and she will, but, right, so no less often.
Monthly.
No less often than monthly?
Monthly. Just make them monthly.
Monthly.
That seem too nasty?
Well, you have your, you, you have your city employees do that now. Your city employees do that, do that now.
They do, I think this person needs to do the same thing.
Well, and especially starting out, and we can kind of find out what's going on, and you know, if you don't like the direction, we can get it straight in the right direction.
All right, so we'll, we'll put the comment in there that it needs to be monthly. Okay, and then the next is preparing the annual marketing budget, I would say the when timeframe would probably be December. That's when we ask for it for your budget season. Yeah, so it'd be December.
We're on page three.
On page three, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so then the next is, again, is this part of an agreement with the chamber, if so, we should see that in reference, so, no, it is, we don't have a written agreement with the chamber, so.
So are we gonna get our chamber active again?
Yeah, that's the pur, purpose of this, yes.
Right, I can.
We don't have an agreement, no.
So, yeah.
Is the chamber willing to work collaboratively with this economic with everything?
Yes. So we'll just say there's no agreement, and I'll just say a collaborative agreement. Okay. The next one she says is. The next one she says is too vague, represents economic development to other departments. What are the measurable goals, example, make two contacts a month with elected officials and outside agencies, oh, so put a timetable on it.
I mean, I think.
That's one, yeah.
It should be monthly.
Okay, so that's monthly.
Monthly, just like the other one.
Okay, if they're reporting to us monthly, they probably won't be two contacts.
Right, yeah.
Because we're the outside agencies.
That's a lot of comment.
Yeah, I'm trying to decipher.
Are we, have you got that deciphered?
It's a lot, it's a lot of attorney's jargon.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they're just saying that if, if we do it dollars per hour, that'll affect the worker, like saying, oh, so I'll just take this one job for this hour, and I'll push it to the second job for the second hour. Instead of doing both jobs in the one hour, because then I'll get paid more.
Okay.
So she's saying, or he's saying, instead of maybe doing it per hour for X numbers a week, or have it more a boundary of, like up to how many hours.
Okay.
Just so the person isn't, is going after time to do certain things, that's how I understand it. That's kind of what it says, the, like, six per hour of your job.
For a job. Okay, so we were saying ten to fifteen hours a week at twenty dollars an hour.
So we're doing up to twenty hours a week?
No, we're doing up to fifteen, ten to fifteen hours a week, twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, everybody okay with that one?
Okay, and then the la- last comment is under expenses. Make some look more than three or four specific costs, you think they will regularly incur, and why don't we just increase that maybe?
Well, I just think that they have to be, has to be improved by the city, no matter what they do.
Right.
And then let's say that they need to have some, if they're a contractor, they should be able to supply some of their own things, like their paper and pen and, they have a computer or whatever. But if they're gonna travel, that might be another thing. In fact, we don't really know until we get into this what there are gonna happen.
Right.
I guess I see that a little differently, I think that, you know, the city should have to supply a certain healthy amount of things initially, like a laptop. You know, um, cause it's our work, our work they're doing.
Yeah, that would be standard, would be to provide the laptop.
Really?
And you, you know, the, then travel expenses be brought to the council to be discussed.
Right, and I, I think that's what, in my thought, that's what this was pertaining to, was travel expenses, it, I, it wasn't pertaining to.
Equipment.
Any equipment or anything like that, we, we understood that we would provide that.
It's one thing if you're going to Cedar Rapids overnight for a convention, but if you're going to Dallas for a week, it's all different.
Yeah, we need to have a problem first.
I'm saying, the cost that they, that they will regularly incur. So in other words, if, if she knows that she's gonna be paying every month, like for advertising or something.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so she knows that's gonna happen regularly, then you should just put that into the.
Well, is there, I assume there's gonna be a, gotta be a budget for this person.
Yeah, yeah.
So those, I mean, there's gotta be, certain things are gonna be critical budget.
So we'll just say we have a budget, so add that language in here.
You know, sometimes, you know, I, I understand sometimes lawyers think they have to make a comment, but I think number five, expenses, explains everything that we were, we're looking for.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know. But anyway.
All right, so I'll respond back to the attorney, so that we have a clear copy then, and then I did just give you a little blurb of the notice I'm gonna start running in the paper and advertising, so.
Okay, I just wanted to say it says contact physician instead of contact.
Okay, thank you.
It says contact physician instead of.
Oh, okay. I have some people I would like to contact.
Yeah, okay.
Right, move on. Item ten, then, resolution number one four three five dash two four, a resolution adopting a parking ticket enforcement agreement between the city of Postville, Iowa and the county of Elmwood Key, Iowa.
You did that already, shouldn't we? And it was just so the treasurer can.
Yes.
Fines have changed, do we have to then make a new resolution?
This is only, this is a resolution only for the fines as they are now. Yes, correct.
Does everybody understand what this is about?
Can we have a birthing kittens now?
Sometimes we are still, sometimes we are still when they're on the boulevards and everything, still parking, I get on the boulevards. And parking opposite floor of traffic and everything.
J-tunes in the main road.
Yeah, I've been working on that too.
Should give that signal to get to it, so never we see a J-tune.
And that'd be, you have a lot of paper.
Happens a lot, yeah.
So this is just gonna take our fines to be collected by the treasurer, county treasurer, instead of us?
What we're not able to.
What, what we're not able to collect.
Okay, okay. All right. I mean, then they have some more teeth than we have, as far as they're.
Yep.
Assessing against your property.
Or the, I think they also might even hit their registration.
Yeah, it affects their registration.
Vehicles if they go in there, try to register them.
What does the county get out of this?
They get five dollars.
Five dollars.
Yeah.
A ticket.
A ticket?
Yeah.
All right.
And they weren't. And the pleasure of everything happening on second floor right in front of my door.
Yeah, yeah.
Although happy, happy people.
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful.
So this just gives them a little more to you.
Yeah, and the five dollars doesn't come out of what we're, oh, shit, they add five dollars when it gets sent over.
I like the one that we got, resolution fourteen thirty-five dash twenty-four for the parking enforcement.
Becky has made a motion, is her second?
Second.
Larry. Are we ready, Darcy?
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Inglehart?
Yes.
The second and third reading also?
Nope, just a resolution.
Okay.
Uh, since supervisors sign off, so we'll send it over to them.
Okay, let's go on to item eleven, then, resolution number one four three six dash two four, a resolution adopting a community service agreement between the city of Postville and the Postville Child Care.
You actually already saw this agreement, it got sent over to their board and they did sign it, so now you're officially adopting it.
And that's what we paid this last, double paying this year on our budget.
Yep.
Was this, was this a several years?
One year.
It's been, yeah, how come such an odd number?
Because that was the amount you gave them.
It was a half of what was appropriated that we had left, and we split it between them and another.
Okay, okay. I can't remember that, yeah, okay.
So this would have to be every year, do you?
Yeah, however, if you choose every year, otherwise, yeah, it'd be every year. When we first started this, I thought we couldn't give money to them. We can't, not without agreement.
But if we have an agreement.
You have a twenty-eight E and they'll have to provide you their financials showing you what, that they spent on what you said.
Okay.
So are there somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we accept resolution, or we adopt resolution fourteen thirty-six dash twenty-four.
Okay, second?
My second.
Laura.
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Steenstrom?
Yes.
Inglehart?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, then, is the power washing of the water storage tank, and you've got, got a bid there, and then Darcy got one this afternoon on this other sheet.
Big difference.
Yeah, so Sparkle Wash, they actually washed it for us back in twenty twenty, that's the last time the storage tank's been washed. And I believe they're, that we just did the sides at that time, it looks like it's pretty comparable to what we paid back in twenty twenty. Um, this time they gave us a price also for the top, which is an additional one thousand eight hundred and then two fifty for a lift, to get to the top. And then I reached out to this Jensen Soft Washing, and they would just do the sides, and their price was two thousand eight hundred.
So do we want both the sides and the top done?
That's up to you, but this Jensen does not do the top.
Why wouldn't you do the top, why don't you do, you know, is this kind of getting after mold?
Right.
The water storage tank is this, if it's stolen, why would it be mold and stung?
I don't know if it's mold, but it, you know, it gets that condensation where dirt sticks to it, you can kind of see it in that one.
Yeah, the slime, right?
If it's really slimy, it's just kind of a black crust.
You got a picture, Larry? Of the, of the tank, how dirty it is, you know?
Well, this is just the outside.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, this is the outside, we're not washing inside, yeah.
Sparkle wash just through the top? And Jensen just the sides?
I'm not sure if they would agree to that being that.
I think they should just do one, you know. Although that is quite a bit of difference.
And they would need the lift too, so.
And Sparkle Wash might just say forget it if you can't do both, so you won't do any.
Where's the, where's the soft wash company located at?
They're at a West Union.
Actually.
They do good work.
Who's up, the Sparkle Wash does?
No, the Soft Wash.
Sparkle Wash did a good job.
They, they do good work.
Can't go wrong, I thought this was just on the sides or something.
Mm-hmm, and I asked them if they could do the top, and they said no, just the sides.
Well, I think we need both, so I think we should just go with the one that does both.
When I first looked at this, I thought it was the water tower.
Oh, they do.
You couldn't pay me that much to even climb the ladder.
No.
It's just that storage tank.
I gotta, I gotta throw two cents in on this too, because I, as a guy, that has spent thousands of hours running the pressure wash, and I have, I've I, I told Darcy right away, when, you know, when she got this bid here for Sparkle Wash, I said, I wouldn't touch it for that. You know, but it, it seems like a lot of money, but boy, you take a look at the surface here, that, that tank is big, you know, and he's gonna do the top.
Probably worth eight hundred dollars difference.
I can only imagine, once you're up there, you know, you add water to that, it's, it's gotta get slippery, I don't know, but, yeah, anyway.
Do they give any indication as like how long it takes to do that much area, like two days?
We didn't say, I feel like last time they did it, it was probably almost a week, maybe, it was about three, four days.
Then do they use any, like any of their so, that had like, so it doesn't grow, retards the growth of any?
So did they do the top last time?
No.
So maybe if we just did the top like every other time, you know, I mean, if they didn't do it last time, then we'll do it this time.
The top has gotten black too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody?
Be two fifty.
What color is on it?
It's not much.
It's just like a.
Concrete.
Oh, okay, concrete. Well, that'd be nice to see what's coming.
How close is that tower to the building?
What'd you say?
How close is that tower to the actual building that's getting the new roof?
Oh, no, it says the water plant, you're talking, that's the sewer plant that's getting the roof.
So we need a motion.
This, this thing's right by the ball diamond, right?
Oh, that's a big one.
I move that we approve for the Sparkle Wash to do the storage tank top and the side.
My second is.
All right. Any further discussion? Out all those in favor, say aye. Those say no, very, right. Item thirteen, then, is fire hydrants, and I, Darcy, you've been talking to that fellow about that.
Uh, yes, I had an individual come in and wanna buy the fire hydrants that we replaced. What did I say, we have nine, Zach told me.
Yeah.
And he said he'd pay anywhere around forty-five to fifty a hydrant, and keeps coming in and asking, keeps coming in and asking. Um, I guess, I guess we've had other people say they'd be interested if they're willing to sell. So I guess I wanna know, number one, do you wanna sell them, number two, how do you wanna go about it?
I think we might as well sell them.
Okay.
Not making any money, so. What do they wanna use them for?
They'll reuse them and then they put them in the yards and decorations.
Or they sell them on marketplace, cause we looked that up, and they were going for over two hundred dollars on marketplace.
Maybe I'll buy one for a hundred and sell it.
They'll take them to local body shops.
Or do you wanna do sealed bids and set a minimum, set a minimum amount on a sealed bid?
And would they sell by each one individually sealed bid, or can they buy one and one?
It depends on how you write your bid.
Depends on how you write it.
Yes. I guess that was a rhetorical question.
So what's your wishes, folks?
Well, I'm sure they're in the way, wherever they're being stored.
They're in that water plant.
Yeah. Give us room for something else, I'm sure, so. I'd say we sell them individually.
Okay.
You know, because, yeah, maybe somebody will just want two or like one put in their yard, but.
What scrap metal or?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. We should say, you know, forty, forty-five is about a hundred.
And put a minimum of thirty-five on it, so people will sit in there.
Say forty, forty-five.
The operator said minimum of a hundred.
That's when they're completed, I, I'd say a minimum of a hundred dollars.
Yeah, cause you're gonna turn around on a marketplace for over two hundred.
I didn't have a hundred.
They're really wanna go big or?
No, that's, we looked.
Look rusty.
So are you going sealed bid or?
I think sealed bid would be better, I don't know.
Put a minimum of a hundred dollars in a sealed bid.
And if you want more than one, you put more than one bid in.
How much do the new ones cost us? New ones are real expensive.
Oh, I, I can't tell you that.
Want more than a hundred dollars.
I can buy that right now.
It's quite a bit.
But they last.
They do.
Eons.
Yeah.
Let's see, maybe on tomorrow.
Okay, so have you got that, Darcy?
I do, yeah.
All right, you wanna read that back for the folks?
Um, so you're wanting to sell individually with a minimum of a hundred dollars by sealed bid? And if somebody wants multiple, they would need to put in multiple bids. Is that correct? Okay, all right, I'll do up the notice.
What is, what is one of the hydrants, what does one of the hydrants weigh, a hundred pounds?
Oh, I don't know. They're heavy. I'd say probably a good hundred, hundred twenty-five.
All right.
Okay. Okay, then we can go on to item fourteen, the consent agenda. Anything in there that you folks wanna talk about?
Yes, so you're just giving him permission to do it, and it's in the alleyway, just so you know.
I mean, on the alley side, right?
Yeah, right, it's on the alley side of his home.
And that alley is already blacktop or concrete or?
Blacktop.
Do we have to vote on that, or?
That, that's in the consent, so.
Unless you don't consent and wanna pull it out.
Yeah, if you wanna pull it out, we can do that.
But he already has a driveway there, she's right.
Driveway's in the state highway.
But is there already a driveway?
Yeah, he's wanting to widen it.
So it's gonna be the whole thing?
No, it's just where the red, his lines are.
But what, this isn't a driveway then?
That's his, that is driveway, and he's extending it.
Over to here. So it'll be the whole thing then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else in the consent agenda?
There's a hometown celebration, you charge so much for entries or what?
We didn't collect any money this year.
Didn't collect any money, it looked like the same number.
Yeah, we didn't get any money for the hometown this year. No donations.
I was out of town, how did it go?
I thought it went down.
Yeah.
Weather was good.
Yep.
Lot of people out there.
Looking for a new announcer. Come, uh, companion.
Did Monroe help you?
What?
Did that guy help you?
Dean always helped me for many years, Dean Olo.
I know, I, I thought you were gonna have that guy that.
Monroe?
Oh, he was in the bachelor.
All right. I'd help you.
You know people?
She said she will.
What?
She'll do it.
Okay.
I never meant a microphone, I didn't want.
Doing any singing?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You want me to give you a rendition? Darcy's shaking her head now.
See, there you go, doctor. Becky, you're gonna help his sleeping.
Good.
You're welcome.
Well, if there's nothing else, is there a, a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I would make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
For more? All those in favor say aye. Those say no, okay. Go on to item fifteen, then the resolution for money to pay the bills. Are you ready, Darcy?
Moore?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Singleheart?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, public comment. Oh.
Um, and I have been encouraging, my name is Russell Dapi, I'm the Postville Public Library Director. I have been encouraging folks in the community to come themselves and sort of share with you, because I know you're all sick of hearing from me, but here we are. Um, the food pantry, the last time I spoke to them, which was about two weeks ago, had a new high of one hundred and seventeen families. Um, a little over a year ago, they were doing about sixty to seventy families a week, and now they're at one seventeen, and every single week they have five to ten new families fill out applications to use the food pantry, so. Um, just throwing that out there, the need is great if anybody watching or here feels so inclined to give a monthly donation to the food pantry, I think that would be a really helpful thing, like ten bucks a month or whatever. Um, they do accept donations of food items, but money is better because they can buy more food with it, because they get their food at a discounted rate from like northeast Iowa, Food Pantry and Waterloo or something. So um, usually the things that are low on is cereal, pasta, beans. Knobber and tuna, oh, okay, so, um, anyway, just sharing that on their behalf, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? All right, mayor's report, am I supposed to?
Do you wanna talk about the circus? Be where you can buy them and.
For the circus?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do have, uh, so we got the circus coming here, and um, we've got received tickets?
We have, yep, so August third, two thirty, or two, okay. A two o'clock and a four thirty showing on August third. Tickets are going on sale, hopefully tomorrow, we will have them distributed. Um, you can buy them at Fidelity Bank, Freedom Bank, City of Postville, Fist Farm and Home, or Freedom Bank in Manona, or the Chamber in Manona. Um, there are, is also a QR code on the poster, or you can go online, you can buy them online. Um, or you can buy them that day at the gates.
And what time are the shows?
I believe it's two and four thirty, but I will tell you for sure, because I have posters back there with the times before you.
So August third is the day of the?
Saturday, August third, yes.
I see where the kids, the lifeguards are gonna be able to work at.
Well, um, they collect their own tickets the day of, but they would need welcomeers, which the pool board wants to get involved, so they can get the contributions, so. Some of their board members or their staff, however they're working it, they would need to be there that day, yes. And we did talk about selling the tickets at the pool, however, I just don't think kids would have that kind of money at a swimming pool, so I think it's best we handle it through the vay. Yeah. And be able to track the tickets that way, so.
So the pool going pretty smoothly this year, I think it is?
Um, yeah, I think so. I know they're, they do well in their concessions, it seems like they have a lot of options there.
They have a new manager too, and I think she's done pretty good.
Managing is, seems to be going well, and um, yeah, still with limited staff, they're just limited hours, so.
What do they pay per hour?
Um, I think they start out, lifeguard, first year is at nine twenty-five, and some of them are up to over ten, I believe, the ones that are.
My grandson, he gets fourteen bucks an hour at McCallum. But FYI, you know.
They're a bigger town than we are too.
I think that's cool that he's coming over here.
What's that?
I think that's cool that he's coming over here and getting more hours, so.
Half of his father, that's why he.
What?
He's half of his father.
Well, that's good, well, that's all right, we need him.
Okay, that was my report that Darcy gave you. All right, council comments, you guys got anything to say?
Um, do you know anything else about those computers?
Oh, yes, we have your tablets.
Oh, okay.
They are here, Matt put the SIM cards in for me, so now we just have to get them charged up, and so yes, you're gonna have them soon. They're here, so we're just gotta get them booted up and.
You remind the committee.
That'll help you sleep too. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no, this is like, it isn't even eight o'clock, folks, so.
That's gonna be the first.
Let me know what you find out on that.
Okay.